Good morning, I'm Paul Gordon with the regular scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, July 12th, 2016, and ask if everybody please join the board as we honor America with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, good morning. First item, as always, is public comment number one. It's an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are on today's agenda. Joe brings in plant life. Is there anybody wishing to address anything on the agenda today? Seeing no one moving toward the microphone, we'll move on to departmental reports. And our first quarterly report is Subacaski Animal Control. Sue, Joe brought plants, where's the puppy or the kitten or something?
Oh, how do you, I mean... That's a pretty big, what is it, a thistle?
You'll have to stick around for the show.
Oh my gosh, okay.
Anytime Joe doesn't bring a big wild cannabis plant in here.
There's one in front of you, it's okay.
Just that little square wood, yeah, just...
Oh geez, okay.
It's been a while since you've been here.
I asked something for me again. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome, Mr. Jiddy.
Hey, Misses Subacaski.
Where you've been, so...
Appreciate it. My visit to here coming up is just trying to get away from some of the things that are kind of home rings or the email boxes you've got to handle.
I know, I know.
Anyway, your day is, can be pretty hectic too.
Well, I'm just gonna kind of give a rundown of some of the stuff that's been happening at the shelter over the last three months. And a lot of it has to do with our donations, a lot of it has to do with things that people are doing for us. And then I'll just give you some more interesting stories. I'll start off with an interesting story. So yesterday we got called to, we have contracts with all, with 10 pounds in Story County for animal control. Besides that, we also do rural area. And so one of our contract called, our towns called us yesterday and said, you know, we have a lady that's been taken away. She lives in a trailer pool house. Windows are all open, but she's got two dogs in there, they're really, really hot. And can you come in and get them? Well, you know, we want to talk to the person and get the permission. I don't just, I'm not, this is, we're not animal control Texas, okay? We don't knock outdoors or anything, we kind of move with the law. So finally tracked this person down, and she gave us permission to go in and get them. And they were very old dogs, and she doesn't want them back. And she's got enough ahead of her right now that she just doesn't want them back. But we've been in a lot of those situations lately. I look for more of those probably with rescue as we, as that rolls along. But anyway, we just, it's been a summer with the heat of doing a lot of checking out things, just to make sure animals are okay. We do livestock, we do domestic animals, you know, dogs tied out, whatever. We had our shelter shindig in May. We got $2,000 from participating, and this is put on by CUK Heating and Cooling, and this is the work here for it. And we had the game, the games for kids, we had silent auction. We took two goats and a mini pony, loaded them up in our stock trailer, took them over there, put them inside a makeshift fence that we made. And they were a big hit. They were like, it was like nobody had ever seen goats or ponies before, they were a big hit. And so CUK was so happy that they gave us an extra $500 just for bringing them over. But anyway, we had two goats, and the goats found a home as a result of going over there. And they went to George Blesso's. So he's a very happy guy, loves his goats.
How do the goats feel about llamas, because that's what the board has right now?
Yeah, no, they're all living life, just everything's good. And we have a benefit in two weeks, July 23rd. And it's called, it's in memory of a lady. And every year they have a motorcycle ride for her. And money used to go to Jasper County. But since a lot of this is coming out of the rolling legion, they're kind of doing a motorcycle ride from town to town, and they pay so much to be in it. And it's called Chasing Tails, it's on July 23rd. And they're gonna go to several of the bars, and then they're gonna, they're gonna give the money to us when it's all over with. And we're gonna give them toward the shelter. And they would like this to become an annual event, so it's pretty cool, we're involved in this. They, I think they just switched to this shelter rather than Jasper County because, you know, of rolling. So we're very grateful to be in on that. Our contracts for the city went out in May and for the new fiscal year, and we've been getting them back, of course. We got another horse in, as you know, I don't know how anybody misses a horse. But it was running at large, and so we have our count of four horses. However, we do have some interest in two of them, so we're working on getting those out of there.
What's the matter, George Blesso doesn't want a couple of horses in a month?
Well, I don't think Peter was with it. I don't think he wanted any more horses, I think he wanted to skip to goats' lumps.
Okay, okay.
So, you know...
You gotta draw the lines on that?
I don't, we don't argue with them, you know, whatever they want, you give the people what they want. The Senior Variety Show, that's very popular in Ames. This is our 22nd show this year. And they were asking, they called up and asked us what our needs were. And since we are buying the building, we told them we'd need some stainless steel cages. So she's kind of sent me a sheet that I needed to a lot of our want lists. And she says, "Dream big," so I don't know what that means. But she said, "To dream big, all the participants in this show are 60 years and older." And the last two years, this show has been instrumental in helping them breathe a life. So they, if, I'm gonna make a point to go, it must be really, really good. We had Eagle Scout from Ames. We make 18 dog beds, I don't know if you've ever seen them, they're on PVC pipe, and they're off the ground. They've got some heavy material or canvas covering them, he put all this, he wrote stuff on them for us. It was just kind of a nice thing, I meant to bring a picture and I forgot. But anyway, so he donated these for his Eagle Scout project, and these are amazing. When you look at a catalog like, in the company of dogs, I don't know if anybody here is familiar with that one, but when you open a catalog like that, they're like $90 a piece in there. So he made us 18. So it's a really nice addition, we're kind of excited to get using them. We're not using any new stuff until our shelter is done. It's all gonna be like, bring out new stuff when everything in the shelter is done. We're working on a possible hoarding situation in Northern Story County. And we've been trying to communicate with the owner, if you will, of the animals. Not being real cooperative at this time, but it's something that we do need to take care of. We really jump on these things, we hear there might be a problem with no more populations, so working with that. Peck Co., as you know, is our, sponsors our shelter in Story County, the Peck Co. in Ames. And they are, they had another adoption event, and so we will be receiving more donation money from that. And I think there were, they let other shelters participate and brought animals there like on weekend for adoption event. But we got credit for the animals that are kept there all the time, so for us, it was a really good deal. The shelter's full, I go into panic mode, I've been here 23 years, every year, panic mode, the shelter's full. Oh my gosh, what are we gonna do? Because we want to maintain our high adoption rate. And by the way, it's right at 99.5, it's just really high. And that's all animals, that's not just adoptable ones, that's all of them. But we're full, and we all panic, and then all of a sudden, because you know, in the summertime, people have activities, they're going to ball games, or going on vacation, who wants to get a dog, and then to later go on a trip, and you know, so they wait. And so we're full to the rafters. But I am thankful that, just like the past 22 years, we will, in about the first part of September, people come rolling in and adopt. So at this point, I think we're not really worried. Brendan Rogers, who had been with the county for, I think, 19 years, retired in April. She was a very good asset to the county. Her and I went on a lot of interesting calls together, especially in the middle of the night, that was always fun. But we kind of, after working together so long, we kind of knew what the other one was thinking and doing, so it made it really easy to go on these calls. And so she's, she's retired, and they are in the process of moving to Arkansas. They bought a house down in Mountain Home, so they just need to sell their acreage. We have a new person hired, and she's been there now about a month. And it's definitely a learning experience. It's not, I think a lot of people believe that out of the animal shelter, we collect happy little animals and put them in their happy little cages. We have a pretty easy job, but there is a lot to learn, and there is a lot to do. And we can deal with a lot of difficult situations, and she's beginning to see that, which is good. So anyway, she's, she'll work out fine. We're also gonna be closed this Friday. We close every once in a while because, for cleaning. We have 146 cats right now. And we're getting a lot, you know, it's ironic, we have a sign right before you walk into our door that says, "Dumping animals in Story County is illegal. If you want to place an animal, call us, and we will make it," you know? Okay? And then we come in, and you know, here's the box of rabbits, kittens, baby pigs, right under that sign. And so, I don't know, we might dust a flechette arrow sign, or, I don't know how we stop that. But anyway, so we're getting a lot of animals in that way after hours. And you know, some of our boxes are tied up, and we get there in the morning, and it's up on a hot day and a hot night, and we've got duct tape shut in a box. So we've been dealing with a lot of stuff like that. So we won't be closed this Friday, we want to kind of stiff the place up again. And you know, we like to have a place when people walk in. You know, this shelter belongs to the residents of Story County, and we want people to come in and feel proud of what's going on there. So we're gonna be closed for Friday, so we get some of that stuff done. Other than that, life goes on it, as usual.
Thanks, Sue. Questions for Sue?
No, maybe I need to have my landlord bring bubble dye just so you can see it.
Oh, I would love this.
How funky he is.
Yeah, but you like it now, right?
Uh, yes, I am.
Yeah, you're a sock, you have, right?
So when is the shelter schedule to be done? You know, you've got prescriptions made from Al and Jill this spring, but when?
Well, as soon as the official, I think they're working now on the surveying and trying to figure all that out, and then we'll hopefully get started. So we would like to, you know, a lot of it, most of it will be inside work. So I mean, it'll depend on, you know, getting everybody together and talking about what we want, and you know, best way to do it, and then involving the people that need to be involved in the purpose, but we really have a target about that. But I would anticipate we'd like to have it done maybe this fall, late fall, early winter, and then have a big, huge grand opening next year, yes.
How would that, in extra capacity, change the operation, other than you'd be able to probably house that anymore?
Well, we, we're changing the dynamics of that, our dog and cat room sit right next to each other. Okay, so when you go in there to look at a cat, the dogs are very noisy, which we'll be putting baffles in, which will be nice in the dog room. But it's more that we're moving the cats way far away from the new parts that we're, what we've acquired. And we're gonna have more room for people to get animals out. We're gonna start some school programs for kids, you know, they're kind of the future of taking care of the animals. So we're gonna have, we're gonna title it yet, but you know, something you like read with the cat. Let kids come in after school and do stuff like that. I mean, those kind of programs especially are good for autistic kids, kids like, you know, like that that want some one-on-one time with animals, or maybe they can't have them at home because a family member has an allergy or whatever. So we're gonna do that kind of stuff. But I can't give you an exact date, that's what I'm hopeful for, but I'll go with everybody's schedule.
Thank you. Thanks, Sue. Next, Joe Quinter, ringing Show and Tell.
I'm just staying till the big week's done.
Joe?
Chair, chair, let me do it. Morning, Board.
Good morning.
I know you have a full agenda today, and I think I'm on the, you know, the plan to do a quarterly report in a few weeks. So I'll take, I'll make this quicker than normal. Yeah, back in 1987, in February, the Board of Supervisors with the support of the public, the Conservation Board, signed off on the IRVM program, and we've been going strong since then. I've been around since about '89, probably about 30 pounds lighter, and maybe a little different air penalty, but probably just as much air. But this year's been an interesting one, as you know. We wrapped up burning rush piles in the, you know, to comply to our previous district maintenance program in April. And that switched over to a little bit of burning, not block roadside, wildland fire. And then we started planting following up after secondary roads. Dirt work, I guess you can say, dirt's kind of a dirty word to me, I like to use soil. I didn't do all the numbers yet, but I think we're at about 25 to 30 sites that we've seeded, and we're caught up with those folks until they really get in gear again and do some regrades right now. As Darren has probably mentioned, they're just fixing some small culverts and things like that, to try to get the water to flow correctly. And with that, we did hire a couple of summer, or seasonal employees, so it's Tyler and myself, the two seasonal employees. And about mid-May, we started weed control. And as you know, I need to thank Board for pointing me as weed missionary this year, and you know, the last 20 years.
Every year.
That's right. It's, it's an all right deal. But this year with the cool wet spring, we've had a tremendous amount of plant growth. And even last night and the night before, as my rain gauge has indicated, we've had some moisture, well-needed moisture. And so things are growing quite well, and I brought some examples in to show you folks. Now we're gonna kind of jump into the weed control. So we start typically, you know, our program has been, let me back up a little bit. About six years ago, up till about six years ago, Board, we had two spray trucks. We still have them, but I took the spray tank and the moonless nozzle was out of one of the pickups. Because we were able to cover the county as well as we thought we needed to, and the public hadn't shown any different, or the Board, that we were covering the noxious weed law as well as we needed to. Well, this year's a little different, with the added moisture and the cool weather, things have taken off. So we start spraying for basically Canada thistle, and areas that may cause some site distance implications, intersections, stops, something, things like that, that we see, or whether you call up, or the public would indicate, or the road department would let me know on my cellphone, and we'll go out and cover those. This year, we've covered about 240 miles of the hard surface roads and some gravel. But the plants kept growing, so there's our roads that we have covered. E29 for one, when I was on it, boom, there's a big Canada thistle spot that looks like, you know, it's just laughing at you there, making fun of us. But it grew after the fact, so now we need to kind of come back and hit those. That really wasn't, it's not, not our system that we had in place, so we've kind of moved on to other things. We do have our spray equipment ready to go, so we're addressing that. But that, that's been some of the pressure that I've been receiving from landowners and producers that know me over the last 25 years, which is fine. I'm glad they call, I support that. If there are problems, I'd like the public to know that, you know, they can call you guys, you can call me, it all flows that way. In essence, it'd be good to get that back out to the public, to address some of these problems by just either calling the Conservation Board, or the Road Department office, or my phone. And my office phone rolls over to my cellular phone, so you know, I get all the calls. With that being said, about three weeks ago, Channel 8 did a wonderful news broadcast on a plant in the parsley family, it's a biennial called Wild Parsnip. And Wild Parsnip, I just, by the way, I just had a call going up the elevator, and I told the person I'd called him back. We've had several calls on Wild Parsnip. It is, it's a plant that's been around for decades, it's biennial again, so it sows itself by seed, it's not a perennial like, like the Canada thistle, for instance, which can effectively cause an economic loss to our producers and landowners in Story County and around. So plants that typically are on the Iowa Noxious Weed list, covered by Iowa Code 317, our granules and plants are a little tougher to control. Wild Parsnip is not a targeted species that we've had in our radar over the past few years. But I, I'm gonna get some direction from the Board and from the public. I think we're gonna cover that a little more coming up next, next spray season, May-June. We can talk about that later. The seed, the population now is pretty extensive. The seed, from the research that I've done, it doesn't last as long, there's a lot of seed, of plants, for four to six years. You know, for instance, well, red clover's really not a plant that we can worry about. But that, you know, that seed is a four-year seed, you know, that's legume and a little hard-coated seed that can last. So four years isn't so bad. With that said, there's a lot of, a lot of seed out there. We don't know what next year's gonna be like, plants do their own thing, it could be on the down-low, but we definitely know there's a lot of weed seed out there. A couple other plants that we target besides the Canada thistle, and I brought in, there's a plant that's blooming right now, it's really nice and tall, maybe I should just go up and get it. I'm gonna keep it under 15 minutes.
You don't want to pass around, have people sniff it, do you?
Well, you can put some of this in your salad.
Oh no, I don't think so. I do have some pot of greenery still in the hole, in my hutch base.
We have a part of this, oh, here it is. This came out from my, just my road ditch on 207th, ready to speak in a...
Torn it, just feet torn it.
Torn it, yeah.
So go like this, if you want to connect it, pretty tall bugger, all right? The root system isn't so extensive. So we're not gonna go out and pull all these, it'd take a while. I'd have to have some more seasonal help, obviously, and probably the Board could come out and help at times, I guess. But this is Wild Parsnip. This is a plant that has an oil, or the sap, not really an oil, it's a sap that will get on your skin and cause blisters when the sun hits it. So if you're in this stuff and weed eating, and our staff knows, we do a program called Nature's Nasty. I think I did it for Cowell's Crew in the Road Department a couple weeks ago. We make sure we are aware of this plant, and I think I mentioned it to the Board throughout the year. So this is the one to be careful about, it has an umble, the seed, and I know it's on my boot, there's a seed right there, so you know, it'll drop, it won't grow in here, down when we get the vacuum out if we need to. Anyway, any questions about the Wild Parsnip?
And you think we're gonna put in some kind of plan to start to try to control it while we don't right now?
Another, a plan.
A plan?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
So is it all over, or just confined to certain parts?
It's everywhere, I mean, it's growing everywhere, it's in town, anywhere, behind McDonald's, the area, I know it's a big spot. But it's been around. It was just, basically this year with the cool wet spring, it really took off. And if you think like a plant, like I do, so... This thistle butter is, is, the best way to control these is before they stalk.
Right.
Right now, it's too late, we're gonna spray this, and the seed's already set, okay, so it's out there. There's no need to mow, to spray this plant right now, and actually, no need to mow it, because what's mowing gonna do?
Spread it around, right?
It's gonna spread it, so we gotta get this earlier. And to get this earlier is a little tough, because you can't see it so well amongst all the other vegetation. But this plant took off, got its head above all the rhone grass and other things, and once it caught that light and, you know, nutrients, it just took off. So my goal would be to, the plan would be to look at these areas that are a little thicker, the stem density, the plant density is a little more than what we like, and hit those. While we're out spraying other plants, it would be okay just to turn on the sprayer, keep in mind with spot spraying, you know, that's the goal of this plan, is not to spray a lot, but just spray as much as we have to. Keep our water and air clean and things like that. The herbicide would be certified for the right-of-way, and also our spray, our applicators are certified. So that answers your question.
You spoke to mowing, and that, how you were gonna do it, when you have the farmers and the people that live out in County? I mean, could you address how you would suggest that they take care of their own properties? Or because you do see some farmers in the ditches, you see some farmers that don't care, or property owners that are pretty indifferent to what is going on in the ditches, would you speak to that, please, Joe?
Are we talking about road sides?
Road sides.
Okay, give you a call. Point, pretty simple. Actually, to the Iowa Department of Ag Land's stewardship, it is illegal to apply herbicide in, in the right-of-way unless you are certified in that category and have herbicide that is registered for right-of-ways. So the best option for control is for us to go out there and, you know, get it on our GPS, get it on our map system, use the correct herbicide, and timing to control this. Now with that, that could unleash a lot of phone calls, but that's why we're here. And if we have to address that and amp things up in another way, that's what we'll do. As far as mowing, there is a mowing law put in place about four or five years ago. Just wanna put these down in case I get, you know...
You get too excited, you're gonna have burns all over your arms and your face.
The mowing law was put in effect to, to help stop recreational mowing and, you know, around our, you know, right-of-ways. This time of year is good for that. But there are a lot of variances to this, to mitigate not mowing. So landowners, producers can mow their right-of-way in front of their residents. They can mow if they have seed corn or seed-generated beans or corn, so they can mow their property in front of those fields. They can also mow for weeds, if they feel it's a weed threat, they can mow then. And they can mow for safety. So if you have a right-of-way that vegetation is tall, coming out of your field, or out of your home, your residence, certainly the residents of Story County by law can mow those areas to be safe. The county can mow before July 15th, the shoulders and the edge, because it is, again, a safety issue. And maintenance issue before stone, things like that.
And it's been encouraged in times past, and you have, went to go down the street to see literature from the Extension Service Office, that they talk about burning, and you know, we have seen you out doing that from time to time, is there anything that you want to say to that?
Yeah, well, roadside prescribed fire is what we call it. Our staff, the conservation staff, is certified in several different classes and have several different credentials hanging above our desk on wildland fire and ignition techniques and smoke suppression and things like that. So we do burn road sides. We target areas that are farming market, that we typically have invested a lot of time into. As far as native seed and the wider right-of-ways, we'll also burn in areas that have high tree stem density. It's a very efficient way to control or set back wady vegetation. So we do a lot of firing. As far as the public sector goes, I do get calls every year on people wanting me to burn, or asking permission if they could burn. And obviously, I'd say, "I can't get the permission to burn roadside." In Story County, you have ordinance that if you are gonna work in the right-of-way, you have to have permission from the engineer. And with that, becomes a proper lighting, safety gear, vests, and things like that. So fire is a great tool that we use to manage the roadside. As far as the public goes, it's not so great if they cause smoke to go over the road and an accident or some personal injury. Whoever lights a match, obviously, is simply looking at it, you know, something further down the line if there's trouble.
Well, talk to us about the thistle, thank you.
Okay, I'm trying to keep this quick. There's another part of this one in there, so I'm not gonna go grab it, but it was about this tall, I couldn't fit it in my truck. And worst of all, it was kind of crazy getting into the elevator. And the lady with me was upset too, so... This is, this is a bull thistle. It is a native thistle, it has white underneath, okay? The leaves are white, unlike the Canada thistle, which is, well, I've been to Canada several times, I've never seen where that thing fits in Canada either. This is a native plant, our bird, Goldfinch loves this plant. It nests in this quite a bit, it's a biennial also. This is, it's targeted, it's on the Iowa Noxious Weed list because it's a desertian species as a thistle. A few of these plants will do no harm. Uh, they, they don't really take over, uh, specifically road crop areas. Um, they're, again, easy to control, but they are on the Noxious Weed List. We do control these where there is a hundred of them in an area. But if there's a single bull thistle on occasion, again, we spot spray, uh, and if I feel it's not going to cause a problem as far as economic loss to the producer or, uh, to public safety, we, we won't hit this. We'll be spraying nonstop if we spray this plant, even though it's on the Iowa Noxious Weed Law. Some of these plants are plants of old. If you think about the Iowa law back in the day before the herbicides were around, you know, um, that small farmer could go out of business if the neighbor didn't control their plants and this thing took over. So I just wanted to bring this in. We've got a lot of calls on this.
We still have people with that mindset in regards to your Canadian thistle.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, some people with some deep-seated memories of what it was.
Right.
Sure that you hear from them, too?
Yeah, that's, it, it's a mindset. So we're just doing what we can, uh, at an acceptable level. So, um, this, this is bull thistle. And last but not least, it's an important plant that I just wanted to mention quickly. Oh, yeah. Now, this is another native plant called giant ragweed. It's probably about like this. It's going to get taller. It's still not done growing, folks. It's going to get fourteen feet tall. Um, I'm six-three with a hair, no, uh, so it'll get up, you know, it can get this tall. What this plant does definitely in disturbed areas where the water's going over the road or where we have planted, so we have a boom mower that we will try to mow as much as we can. This will grow on intersections and cause, obviously, cause sight distance problems. Um, and also for the maintenance crew in the winter, when these things all die back, you still have these stems, okay? And that'll act as a snow fence in the, in the top of the, of the back slope and will cause snow dripping. It'll dump the snow right on the road. So we do, uh, we have this very simple plant to control, and at times where the road department calls in or I know there's a problem, we'll lightly hit this one and knock it back. Again, we try to get them when they're a little shorter, which is now, uh, obviously, you got to figure this is down in a ditch, so it's not quite way up there. Now's the time to kind of, sorry. Spray this. Good.
Interesting, Joe.
Any more plans?
We can, we can definitely tell where your passion lies.
Uh, that'd be waterfouling.
Hang on, I got one more.
Absolutely. I'm here all day.
We're going to be moving in our consent agenda here shortly. I appreciate what you've done. We, I see we have, uh, we're looking in with a contract for spraying here going forward. You know, would you like to speak to that just briefly?
Absolutely. Thanks for bringing that up. So, uh, not only do, you know, are we in charge of the, the weed situation through the Iowa Code three-seventeen, we'd like to keep the brush down in Story County for many reasons. Again, sight distance, uh, brush will affect the integrity of the road system with the roots, uh, you know, taking out any culverts or, or blocking water. It can also be hazard to motors if they go off the road and they hit a tree or, you know, a series of trees. So throughout the twenty years, we've been, um, taking care of the brush. Back in about nineteen, you know, two thousand and seven, we started a, a plan where we in-house, uh, the IRBN crews, uh, in conjunction with contract sprayers, applicators that we hired, would cover a quarter of the county a year. And that way, every four years, we've got a rotation. Now, as the board knows, we've had a little trouble finding contractors to come in. Uh, there's only a couple that I'm aware of that do this in the state right now. Liability is, is extreme with this kind of profession. So this year, we do have, um, some monies budgeted to hire contractors, which I am attempting to do, to get in and spray the townships of Union and Indian Creek. Those townships have quite a bit of brush. They are in the southern part of the county where, um, you know, we have a few more river systems in there and it's just more of brush producing and mire. Uh, more passions and things like that. With that said, the roadside program will be targeting Palestine Township, uh, and it's your department to control brush.
That's you. That would be you.
That's us. Yep. Uh, yours truly and, uh, the three other people we have. They're doing it as we speak today in Palestine Township. They loaded up after the rain went through and throwing great guns. We have, uh, we have a Polaris, you, we have a UTV with a tank and a handgun, and we also have a boom, a truck with a boom and stun. So they'll try to cover Palestine Township and also any other, uh, spots that may be called in or that we're aware of to do that. And I'd like to mention that within those areas that we have contractors, any of my crew, we have several maps. The one map is a sensitive crop map that we have put together, um, according, you know, to anybody who's certified or wants to be certified, they are on Idol's website. We have that on the map. We contact those people by, by phone, if not in person. We make sure that we, um, exclude those areas from any herbicide, knowing that they will have to control the brush on their own. Um, through a permit process, we are, uh, getting, uh, figured out. So the other thing, uh, is just not sensitive crop, but areas that people have called in and let us know that they, they do not want herbicide in their area. Again, we'll mark those off, we'll mark those on a map, uh, that's in our map. We have those in our spray trucks and, uh, the contractor also has those. And then we, uh, make, uh, arrangements with those landowners to address any problems they have in the roadside that may not be covered up, you know, that we're not, they don't want us to spray it, then we're going to have to do something different. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Appreciate it. Anything else, Joe?
No, I was just going to say, Marty, it's a good question to ask, but, you know, keep aware of those fifteen minutes. He said he was only going to hold fifteen. Well, I always do. Cheers.
Thank you, Joe. Really good, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, consideration of our July fifth minutes.
Move, approve.
Discussion, notations, corrections. Clinton? Chief? Sanders, aye. Passes. Uh, personnel actions, um, looks like we got an addition, Shelley, that I need to read in. We got the addition of a new hire in the sheriff's office, uh, as of seven thirteen. Christopher Bridgeford at sixteen, uh, sixteen thirty oh-five biweekly.
Move, approve the addition.
Motion is second. Chief?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Uh, consideration of claims first, July fourteenth. Second. Motion is second. Clinton?
Aye.
Chief? Sanders, aye. Claims passed. Consent agenda, please add. Road closure seventeen oh-one and utility permits seventeen oh-three, seventeen oh-four, and seventeen oh-five.
So move.
Second.
Uh, moved and seconded, I assume with the noted additions. Chief?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent, agenda passes. Uh, we do have a public hearing item today. Consideration of Resolution seventeen oh-two, approving a loan agreement, awarding the sale and authorizing the issuance of one-point-five-million-dollar urban renewal tax increment revenue bonds. Lee, in order.
Morning, man.
It's always fun to follow Joe. For those of you who are walking beans, I'm sure you'll join me tonight and have some nightmares. The item, the resolution is the culmination of the action that's been occurring by the board since early part of May, late April. This is the final piece in the financing for the first phase of Ohio State Research Park, um, Conservation Park. The board last week is glad State Bank Trust has the bidder, and I'll be glad to answer your questions. Please subdue him.
Well, I, I just wanted to know this, because, um, numerous discussions have transpired in it, and I think that we're going to take the dollars sooner rather than later, probably sometime soon.
Yeah, and so that stemmed from, um, me, um, wanting to wait as long as possible to take the dollars since I don't think there's imminent use of them. I want to wait as close to December first as possible to take the dollars. But State Bank came back and rightly said, wait a minute, we gave you a quote of an interest rate based on you taking the dollars sooner rather than later. Um, so when do you expect that to actually happen if this passes?
I, I was expecting it to happen sometime, probably by end of July.
By the end of July?
First of August.
So we'll have those dollars and that'll be set in that range. Other comments? All right, so I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to address, uh, Resolution seventeen oh-two. Seeing no one moving, uh, to address, I'll close the public hearing and turn to the board for questions, comments, and/or action.
Nope, I would move the Resolution seventeen oh-two, approving the loan agreement, authorizing the issuance of the one-point-five million for the urban renewal tax increment. I'm anxious.
When we talk about TIF funds, I go.
Yes.
Okay, yep. You know, I, I'm not qualified, by a second. I go tenderly into this, knowing that, uh, this comes from pulling revenues from parts of the county. As it, uh, the state only backfills to a ninety percent basis, I, uh, it has to rise to a certain level and have a, a project needs to bear in mind my, my role. I think we have, I, in my short time here, I have seen that as being, as I have followed this loosely, I would have to say that I have comfort in going forward and I move the second. The, uh, resolution, the, the purchase of these ones.
Super. Thank you. Got a motion and a second, a qualified second. Uh, yeah, for me, so, so a couple of things that I want to make sure we know here. Uh, for me, this project has always been, uh, about the dramatic impact, economic development and otherwise, impact that this project in total, uh, will have on Story County. Uh, and the reality is that the county, uh, I think, this is the first step in this, but the county can step up and be, uh, a major player in a project that is going to have tremendous benefits. I mean, when you look at, uh, expanding, and if I missed the number, Steve, correct me, expanding employment, uh, at, at the park from about eighteen hundred jobs to somewhere around six thousand jobs over the next X number of years. Uh, the opportunity for Mike Cox and his outstanding staff in conservation to have what I think will really be a, a showpiece in terms of the way water quality can be handled near development and in drawing a lot of people into the county park system that otherwise don't have an opportunity to get out to some of our county parks. Uh, by strengthening our relationship with Iowa State, uh, and all the benefits that we're starting to see already, uh, going with that, uh, I just think that this is an outstanding and appropriate role for the county to play. I do want to point out that the one-point-five million is not in total. That is one of three phases. The third one I don't expect will be one-point-five million. I expect that third one to be considerably less than that. But there are two more steps in this over the years as we develop this thing out. Um, so I'm fully on board. I appreciate the motion and the qualified second. Um, uh, I think this is exactly what the county's supposed to be doing.
Uh, just a quick comment, uh, not very much to add to what's already been mentioned, both, uh, the two of you. Uh, but this has been a, a, a lengthy process, uh, over several years, uh, in looking at this, and there have been multiple players. And I certainly would be remiss if I didn't, uh, mention the role of the Conservation Board, uh, and certainly Mike Cox and his leadership as well. Uh, but the collaboration that, uh, went on with the University Research Park, uh, you know, uh, back and forth and trying to make sure that, uh, the Conservation Board, uh, in taking, uh, uh, control of this, uh, green space and, and area, uh, was in a position to be able to manage it in such a way that it would, uh, be environmentally sensitive, uh, meet the ongoing needs of water quality, uh, and, uh, the prospect of being able to tie this in with, uh, our trail system, uh, in the future, uh, all had tremendous pluses. And I would also, uh, uh, like to acknowledge that, yes, uh, I do hear from, uh, various, uh, individuals, some, uh, city council, uh, folks and so forth, that there is that concern about, uh, using the funds in this particular matter. What I have, my comment to, to them is that every project that comes before the board, uh, is analyzed, uh, on its own merit. And that even though, uh, there, the potential is to be committing, uh, over the next couple of years, uh, a certain portion of those dollars that, fifty percent of the, the dollars that we could maximum use, uh, other projects in other areas of the county ha, will have opportunities in the future if we continue down this path. So this isn't, uh, just, uh, a one, a one-shot type of situation. We started with Deacon's Lake in Zering. We see a, an excellent opportunity here, uh, in, uh, the Ames area. Uh, I'm sure that in other communities, uh, this is important. But one of the things that I've always said to those communities is you need to have some skin in the game as well. Uh, and what we've learned, uh, that I've learned over the years is that no longer through congressional earmarks, uh, the more the county can be a part of public-private partnerships, the better we can leverage dollars, uh, for those dollars that are currently out there. And so I certainly wanted to, uh, certainly compliment, uh, uh, the Research Park, their staff, Carter and, uh, Marco Watts, as well as the Conservation Board for, for their work, uh, to this point.
Outstanding. Mike, Steve, would you guys like to add anything before we, uh, vote on this?
I would just reiterate.
Step up so that we'll get it recorded for us, Steve. Steve Carter, who runs the Research Park.
So I would just simply reiterate my thanks to the, to the board and the Conservation Board, Mike and his staff. Everybody has, as we all do, we spent now two, almost three years there looking in at this project and, uh, and I, and I think it's just going to be a tremendous project for Centralline, and it will have regional impact, and I'm more excited than ever, but truly appreciate your efforts and willingness to do something different. And, uh, otherwise.
Well, this is, there's no doubt this is way outside the box in terms of, of where the county ended up, uh, coming down on this thing. I would, I would just point out the county is, uh, the people of Story County are acquiring an asset in this park. It's going to be county-owned and county-run, uh, and it's really a cool model that we're able to put together, uh, where directly now, the city of Ames, Iowa State University through the Research Park and Story County are all three going to touch right there. Uh, and then, and as Wayne said, have some major skin in the game, uh, in what is going to be, uh, at least regional, maybe national kind of project.
And we, we hope to have both the board and the Conservation Board. We just moved in a, a week or two ago to our new building. The university's invested, uh, a twelve-million-dollar appropriation to build really the centerpiece of this effort. It, it is a facility that brings together all of Iowa State's economic development entities for the first time ever, puts them in a location that the public and business can get to easily and, and provides, uh, an environment that we have never had before. And I think it will, it will change the way economic development occurs at this stage in a very good way. But in that building and looking out on the property, um, you can't help but feel the difference it's going to make. This project will transform the way that Research Park, um, not just looks, but the way it is utilized, uh, by the tenants, the employees, the companies, and it's, it's just going to have tremendous impact.
Well, eh, so, yeah, I mean, I think you hit our great point, Steve. If the county or, or if some entity had not come in and, and taken this on, there really was not going to be an opportunity for a lot of public access, uh, to what was going on in the Research Park. And now all of a sudden, there's going to be this public, uh, access kind of ar, area. And in addition to that, I'm so excited about, uh, us trying to get out in front as a county and dealing with some of the water quality issues and how we address some of that. I think that's the right spot for the county to be. Really doesn't have a lot to do with the Research Park other than being cutting-edge, but I just look at an opportunity, this is, this is the public's entrance into being able to utilize. utilize the facilities at the Research Park, and it's one of the reasons I'm so excited about it. So again, thank you very much. Any other comments? We're voting on approving Resolution 1702, approving the loan agreement. Clinton?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. It passes. A lot of hard work. Mike, I think the first time we talked about this has been two and a half years ago probably. Been a long time coming to get here. Thank you so much for your work. Additional items? Consideration of Resolution 1704, fund balance resolution. Lisa Markle.
Good morning, officially. Good morning. At the end of each fiscal year, I look before you a fund balance resolution so that you can choose to assign funds if there are funds needing to be assigned in the general fund or funds reported as general fund dollars. I did expand this resolution this year to include all of the legislative funds of the county, okay? So it looks longer and different. The general fund, the dollars that are assigned are for Justice Center renovations. We've had Department Energy Efficiency in there for a number of years. I think we should probably discuss that at the budgeting issue. 178,000 for CIP projects, 146,000 for small community funding. So the total assigned amount is 474,358 in the general fund, okay? There's also inmate commissary, sheriff reserve officers, county attorney, bank collection, and conservation acquisition and capital projects funds that are assigned. They are not per code, restricted use dollars, so they are considered other general fund funds in the assignment process. The assignment process is the least restrictive of the processes of fund balances. You can easily unassign funds with just a board action. Most of the funds we have are restricted funds, and they must be used for the purpose of that fund or the program. I know there's a whole list of restricted funds there. And then we do have committed funds in the secondary roads funds, okay? And those committed funds are for secondary motor vehicles, spy op, the type of way. In order to uncommit those funds, it takes a connection. Any questions?
A good question for Lisa. All right. If there's none, I'd take a motion of Resolution 1704.
Motion approved, Resolution 1704.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Chee?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. 1704 passes. Next item on our agenda is consideration of setting a date of August 2nd as public hearing for the FY17 budget amendment.
Can you jump back and forth between FY16 and 17 a lot this time? So I'll try to tell you which year we're on at this time, okay? Budget amendment for FY17, and I told you at the end of the fiscal year when I did the last appropriation that I was going to need to come to you for a budget amendment for a couple of events that occurred early in the fiscal year that weren't planned or budgeted for last March. The expenses are primarily the animal control and Research Park dollars and pipeline inspections. I cannot exceed, we cannot exceed this county in any of the 10 service areas. Pipeline inspections are in a different service area, but we did not budget it. So that one's critical as far as I'm concerned. So this amendment we sent to the paper, I assume it would be a published 721 when I asked them to do that, and it must be within 10 to 20 days before the hearing. So we will have a public hearing on August 2nd to review the progress going forward. Overall, the revenues are increasing by 4.4% and the expenses by 12.7%.
4.4%.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions for Lisa? Okay, I take a motion of setting the date August 2nd, 2016's public hearing for the FY17 budget amendment.
Don't move.
Seconds.
Motion second, further discussion. Clinton?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. August 2nd is set.
I'll be back.
Yes, you will. Discussion and consideration of contract between AOS Security Consulting and Information Technology for Security Audit and Risk Analysis. Barbara Steinbeck, hi Barbara.
Good morning, Rick. Did you get a chance to look over what I submitted?
I have.
Yep.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about doing a security audit for the county. This is a budgeted item. It, I initially had approached four different vendors, and one failed to return a quote to me. Another said he would have to involve a third party, that they don't actually do that. I did receive this one and then one other. The other vendor also did a network analysis for us. I wasn't real happy about the depth that they did. So after reviewing this, and especially the fact that it adheres to the NIST standards, which is the National Institute and Standards Technology, it's the one you want to adhere to. So I liked this because it looks at 16 areas that are IT-related and analyzes where you're at now and then tells you where you should be. And what they do, one or two people come in for several days and they interview the different people within the county. For instance, they may talk to facilities about door security, they may talk to HR about how the records are secured, and then they go back and analyze all the data they collected within those few days. And the outcome is two different reports. One is a high-level report for management, and then one is a detailed report for the IT staff so that we know what areas need work and where we're doing well. I thought this would be a good time to do this at the beginning of the budget year because we have a couple of projects IT-related that this would impact, and one is our wireless hardware replacement and then our core switch replacement. But also, once we have the results in and review the recommendations, it will give us some information to keep with us then later in the fall when we're doing our budgeting talks. Do you have any specific questions about?
Just more or less clarity. You've mentioned the role of facilities, and you talk about storage and other types of things. When I look at the term security audit, what we're talking about is expanding more than just the software, the hardware, and the different systems that we basically use. And I guess that sounds a little bit different, and the reason I raise that question is I know that Joel Roney and the IT Technology Consortium have done, did an audit for the Iowa State Association of Counties.
Sure.
And they've done some audits for different other counties, but I think it was in more of a different realm. It was more or less looking at their IT structure and things of this nature. So I was just kind of curious, in this regard, are you sensing that there are potential areas that we are lacking that need to be addressed, or that maybe this audit will just tell us that there may be some areas that need to be addressed that we're not aware of? I don't know.
Well, that too. There are areas, sometimes it's always nice to have a fresh pair of eyes to look at what you've got. We've had a lot of turnover in our network staff, so I want to make sure that we're covered as far as the risk. You know, all you hear about now is the ransomware. I want to make sure, I think my team does a good job, but I want to make sure that there isn't something out there that we're missing that we should implement. And what this looks at is how IT relates to the other departments as well. For instance, door security, there is software. We want to make sure that the right people have the right access to do, if you'll look at access control, that evaluates your roles as to what you should have rights to. Right now, we get a, there's a form that a manager fills out that gives his staff rights to certain things. And this isn't for the purpose of blocking people out. I want to analyze and make sure, are we doing the right thing? Are we giving the right people control of the right systems? It's kind of like the accountant that writes the check-in, signs it. We don't want to be in that situation.
Thank you.
All right, so Barb, I want to make sure that I understand what we're hoping to get done here. So do you feel like we need to bring in outside, an outside pair of eyes, I think you said, an outside pair of eyes to take a look at our current practices and operations, how we integrate IT throughout the county, what our weaknesses might be? Looks to me like that's going to cost us in excess of $25,000 to bring them in and do that. And then tell me what happens from that point on. So we get this report, you said it, we get a summary for the higher levels and you get a detailed report. What happens from there? What do we do with that information? What are we getting for it? And then ultimately, what do we have to do to stay up to date on whatever we get?
Well, I think this is something that, once it's in place, it would be reviewed annually to make sure that we're on task. But what that second report will do, it will tell us specifically what areas we need to change, make improvements in, and then how to do it. They do not do the work, that's up to us, but they tell us what we need to do and they would help us determine how to do it. So it's kind of a roadmap. This is what you need to do to make sure that you're compliant, and we're actually right now doing a CGIS audit. So we want to make sure that we have everything in place so that we can make sure that we're compliant with everything. And there's a lot under the IT umbrella that may get missed or we weren't aware of, and this audit will be so detailed that it will pick it out.
It'll pick it out, and then on an ongoing basis, we'll be able to maintain? Or are we going to have to bring in a group like this every year, every five years? What should we expect as a board?
You know, I think once we have it in place, then it will have different areas that we know on an annual basis we should review. They'll look at all of our policies, make sure they're up to date. I think that's probably the one thing that will change the most as the years go on and technology increases. But I don't foresee in the next five years having to do this again. None of us knows where technology's going to take us, but I think once we have this as our starting point, it'll be much easier to take control of the things that maybe we're aware that we need to work on.
The concept sounds intriguing and quite interesting. My question is, are we alone in this venue, or there are other counties, our sides and so forth, with the type of IT department that we have that have done something similar to this that you're aware of?
When I attended the ICIT mid-year conference a few weeks ago, this was a hot topic of discussion. A lot of counties want to do this. A lot of counties, the smaller ones, don't have IT staff. They feel open, they feel at risk. I was lucky enough that the board approved us $25,000 last November to do this. I think once it's done, I can then at future meetings kind of mentor the other counties a little bit. They ask me questions anyway, but all of our information is at risk. And you know, a county, even if it doesn't have an IT team, still has the same data that's at risk.
Does it amaze anybody else, or is it just me, that these contracts always come in, these proposals always come in within a few dollars, in this case, one cent of what was budgeted? Come on.
It is a little bit over. Well, I budgeted after I got this, so I kind of just rounded it up. However, there is, for the auditor, the person that comes up and does the audit for us, there will be a little more, they capped it at as an additional $1,800 in expenses in that. And I asked them what it kept. They said it would be extra, and I said, I want to know how much. So potentially, there could be an $1,800 charge.
Question, Marty.
Well, I look at this from top down. Congratulations, you had four people actually vet. You get in vetting environments when you just sort of get two, but you had four. Having done that, having selected these people, is there any vetting that you've done, checking on them, who they are, and what they have done?
They were recommended to me, and they gave me references. I've checked with other, as I mentioned, other people in the ICIT arena, and they all speak very highly. I've used them for other projects.
You want to do it in Story County or yourself?
Yes, Story County. So I'm impressed, I've met with them several times, impressed with the detail and the importance that they gave my questions. I thought they did a good job of answering anything that I had to ask.
When you said to me you have a listing of 16 practices that are conductive that they will be looking at or potentially looking at, I noticed, and I put my school board cap on, when I see this, I see written policies related to security. What, I don't know, I guess you probably have them, correct?
Yes.
Yes. How often are they reviewed and updated? Do you have a set schedule, or is that something you bring back and refresh from time to time? Taking into account, you know, you addressed it yourself, and I think everybody that's got any kind of internet access would realize that there's evolving in new threats that are on the horizon.
The basics don't change. Make sure you have access to what you need, and we do have an acceptable use policy that we review as far as maybe on the network that people have to accept before they have access. Our security policy, I've looked at several times. I feel it does need updating, but I didn't want to start anything if they turn around and say, well, that's the wrong path, you need to do it this way. I've done security policies for other places I've worked. You have to start at the basics and make sure that's protected, and then drill down individually. If you think, sometimes the broader policy is better. You don't want to drill down too far, but they'll tell me if I drill down too much or if I need to be more specific in a certain area.
With, well, granted access, just last, granted access to some firms do this, I mean, that brings it right to the crux of what we do and what we have. I mean, is this, I would think, you know, here's the new guy question, is the county attorney had any, had any reason to look at? I think it falls into this.
I think that once this is approved, I'll take it to them. Ethan does a good job of looking over contracts and things, and then there's his okay or they, or let's change this. That's what we've done in the past with policies.
Marty, you probably know where, of course, Rick is, that almost 10 years now I've served on the CoStar, which is the county strategic IT department. We have been in place working with Iowa counties and trying to enhance IT presence. As Barbara already alluded to, there's still about 22 out there that have little or no IT presence, and they're having to contract out. And part of the ICIT group have actually been going out, doing audits, working with smaller counties, helping review their systems and so forth. And I know the first thing that we look at, and I certainly appreciate Super Brian Sanders' concern, is when we first look at that $25,000 and we say, okay, that's going to be the audit figure, and that's going to give us all of this, but what is the potential ongoing cost if we find out that there are some things? The likelihood is, is that we don't know that, but you know, if we want to stay cutting edge ahead of things such as cybersecurity threats and other types of things, the vulnerability, as she's indicated, we've had several staff members change. You know, the access to information and things of that nature. Do we have safeguards in place, all of those kinds of things? I think it's certainly something that we have been somewhat an innovator in the past in several different areas. And I can see that this has the potential of giving Barb and giving us a high level of not certainty, but of assurances that we are trying to look at the critical things that could impact us as we move forward in this particular realm. But I feel more comfortable knowing that this group of dedicated IT professionals like we have here are really talking about what they see in the system, what counties can and should be looking at, realizing that not many of them are going to be maybe as quick to jump into this arena. And so I would suggest that if either you or Rick had any comfort or uncomfortable at any things, I think Barb can have you reach out to get more information from this particular group about why these things are very important. But I think Barb really summarized that this is something that counties are being asked to take a look at.
But it's a very real threat. So I'd like to ask, so IT and our structural reports through our direct So I'd like to ask, so IT and our structural reports through our Director of Internal Operations, Alyssa, I'd just like to ask your opinion on this and what you see it doing for us from an IT perspective?
Good morning. I've had a few conversations with Barb regarding this, and there are audits that we need to do to make sure we have everything in place. Policy, updating the policies is a huge project that Barb is going to undertake this year. I think this audit will help craft that, help get us where we need to be. And also, on my perspective, when we deal with HIPAA and different things like that, this audit will also, instead of going out and doing a specific security audit for HIPAA, this will encompass that and make sure that we have things in place, everything in place where we need to have it in place. So I do know that that is another, obviously another audit that would be done by committee committees.
So you guys feel like this will give us a nice snapshot in time of where we are with our IT policies and practices, and allow us to make some decisions going forward of what Story County needs to be doing?
Exactly.
Yeah. Laura, I see you here, I'm just saying. Wayne, any questions? Marty?
No, I feel that you guys were proactive in the fact that you started this process last September. You donated, you know, a portion of money, it was $25,000. Yes, it was, I don't know how close we were to that $25,000 bid came in. It does look a little bit, or open-ended, but you have addressed that.
I like that you narrowed it down where $1,800 are the maximum additional cost that can come.
And so, I don't disagree with the fact that you can't know too much, too soon on something along these lines, I just.
Well, we don't know what we don't know is the problem.
Until somebody tells you, you don't know.
Yep. Laura, what's your question?
I.
Loud enough, loud enough so that the mics can pick it up.
Uh, Laura Olson Ames. I wanted to speak in support of this, and I'd like to provide that Barb said something very important about also may help evaluate where maybe it's too strict. As a consumer, I have at various times over the last few years had to work with Barb about finding access if there was a particular document I wanted that was very large, or I wanted to scan something that wasn't scanned into the system. I'm also aware of a gentleman in Ames who had talked to me a couple of years ago about a problem he was having getting data and information from the recorder's office, and it seemed to be somewhat technology-related. So I think that this is good for the public also. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
I do have one question, Barb. I've been seeing Mary for a while. Can we work out, you know, as far as when they start, finish, do they, do they?
I believe they promised during the days.
Okay.
I don't remember if that was in the contract during our conversation, but, and that's a good point. I said, I don't want this to drag out. I want to get going. If there's something that's wrong, I want to fix it immediately. We've had a lot of things going on with counties recently, and I don't want to be one of those fatalities.
Okay. There's no other question, I think a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. A motion and a second to approve a contract with AOS Security Consulting to come in to do a full assessment of our IT policies and practices. Clinton?
Aye.
Chief?
Aye.
Sanders, aye in passes. Thanks, Barb. Thanks, Alyssa. Next item is discussion, consideration of funding in the amount of $150 for the proposed watershed coordinator.
You must have.
Oh, oh, Deb, I forgot Deb. I can't do that. Discussion, consideration of changes to asset policies and procedures. Deb, show room. Hi, Deb.
Good morning, Board.
I was just going to move right on.
That's all right, I can make this short and sweet. Within asset, we have policies and procedures that we look at on an annual basis. The asset board has approved those in the next segment process. It's for each funder in the asset process to consider them for approval. And we just had some little bit of language changes. It doesn't change the content necessarily of the policies, but we do have two larger changes that I want to point out. The first one is updating funders, and then the second one is the very last one, which is entitled Addendum C, the revisions summary, that changes our service codes and the number of panels that we'll have. So I'll first start with updating the funders. We clarified the name of the region because that was kind of confusing to some of the volunteers, so we went ahead and just spelled it out, Central Iowa Community Services and the Helping Disability Services region. And then, I believe it was two years ago, ISU government, student body changed their name to ISU Student Government. So we wanted to reflect that change in the policies and the procedures as well. One thing that I need to add on here too then is that we are removing the Department of Human Services as one of the quote-unquote funders. The reason for that is their involvement has really changed over the last probably five to six years. It started with them not having volunteers. They farmed up their volunteers to remain, their remaining funders about three or four years ago. And then we lost the administrative person who came to the admin team meetings about 18 months ago. And then we received word in April, I believe it was, of this year, that the funds they were contributing towards the administrative assistant were no longer going to be available in decap funds. And so.
Has $3,600?
Yes. Yep. Yep, that covers administrative services as well as dollars for just regular costs, printing, those kinds of things. So what that does then is that that then triggers us to amend the 2020 agreement. The 2020 agreement is around the administrative piece of it. So I've worked with Shelley, we are updating or amending that agreement. The county will be the last entity to consider that agreement because then we will file it, but we're waiting for Iowa State, for Student Government, that individual to come back for the fall semester to sign it, and then I'll bring it to this board for consideration. So that's what we're doing there. The rest of it is pretty self-explanatory as far as what are our changes. We're clarifying what our quorum is and what we can devote on business, just clarifying language. The last bullet point there though, Addendum C, which has been our service codes. Historically, asset has had four panels for services. We had health, basically, children's services, and prevention services, and we have narrowed that down to three panels and renaming them education, income, and health. And that really mirrors the process that United Way has been doing now for the last couple of years. So we went through and defined what those three panels are, and we've reassigned services to each of those panels. No services were dropped, no services were changed, but we went ahead and did that reassignment, shared that with agencies, got some feedback, responded to the feedback, and now we're ready to roll that out to the agencies when we do the training later in August. So those are the changes in that show.
Question for Deb. I was amazed to find, so this is more of a general asset, but Deb and I were referring some numbers, were reviewing some asset numbers the other day, and Wayne, do you realize the growth of county's participation in asset in the time you've been on the board has just been astronomical? And I think it's the right place for the county to be. I know that since we've been together over the last six years, we really committed a lot of funds to trying to be a true partner there. It's one of the great things we do. We appreciate your involvement in asset. I hate seeing that DHS is now all the way removed. I know they were mostly removed prior to this year. I hate to see that they're all the way removed now. Take a motion to approve if either of you is so inclined.
So move the changes to the asset policies and procedures as submitted.
Second.
A motion and a second. Clinton?
Aye.
Chief?
Aye.
Sanders, aye in passes. Thanks, Deb. Sorry, I almost skipped you.
That's all right.
Now, we can go to discussion and consideration of funding the whole amount of $150 for the proposed watershed coordinator for Central Iowa Watershed Management Authorities. Leanne, harder. I was amazed when we got this from Polk County, that they were asking us for $150 for this.
As you said, the request is from Polk County on behalf of the San Vigo Watershed Management Authorities. These two, those three authorities are from out of the, two authorities, Formout Creek and Luton, and Spring Creek. What these entities have done is put together a watershed management plan, and now they're at the stage where they're going to hire a watershed management coordinator. An annual amount of $145,000 from that initial will be retained by the Polk County's Federal Water Conservation District. So the letter contained a formula that broke down post-funding this position by the different entities that are members of these two watershed management authorities. As you said, Story County's cash share is $150, similar to Polk County, or Boone County as well. The largest share is Polk County with $55,000, and then Des Moines is $32,000. They broke down the funding play identified by August 1st. It's a one-year commitment, it's a one-year position at this time. I've not heard anything that would go beyond that, but the question's just kind of came out. I'd be glad to answer your questions. Again, $150.
I like it as a model. I mean, I think, I think what Polk County's trying to do here is, Wayne refers back to something you mentioned earlier today, is make sure that there's multiple entities with skin in the game, even if it's only a little tiny skin. And so they're asking us for $150 in skin of $145,000 to go for this watershed coordinator. I'm much more interested in the model that this sets forth than the impact to Story County either $150 or the very minimal watershed area that we have that drains any of this. But I think it's important to be a partner in these kind of things, especially if we're going to look at doing something similar. I mean, we've got a meeting Thursday, I think, talking about doing this with the Squaw Creek watershed, or not talking about doing this, talking about what we're going to do. And I kind of like this as a model to think about. Questions for Leanne. Marty, any thoughts?
No, I would, I have no questions. I would want to move to approve.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Chief?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. $150 is approved. No agency reports other reports, FY16, Quarterly Financial Report.
I'm just going to skip around to one.
You back and forth, back and forth. We're not talking about 18 yet.
No. No, no, we're not. Fine. You have in front of you the FY16 year-end, can't find my copy, Quarterly Financial Report. Couple of things that I wanted to note is, overall, the financial position is pretty healthy for any fiscal year. The budgets slash amendments were pretty accurate as of, as almost 91% of the budgeted expenses is where we ended.
Pretty good.
And we came in at 98.65% of the revenue. So we're getting better at budgeting those closer to actuals. Financial policy of the county says that we want at least 25% in the balance, and for the general and supplemental funds, the main, which are the main operating funds of the county, we came in at 33%.
Oh, that's nice. That's a compliment.
Yeah, it was, yeah. Our goal for the rural fund issues were 15%, it came in at about 19%. So we're doing, we're doing that funding also.
Right. Couple, couple notes. First of all, there's a couple of big ticket items that we had originally budgeted to spend in 16 that didn't get spent in 16 or are going to get spent right away here. So that reflects kind of to the positive. That inflates that general fund.
It does, yeah.
A little bit. And two right off the top of my head are the animal control building and the secondary road building in Kelly. Are there any other big ones sitting there that I'm not thinking of?
Sitting in the project.
Yeah, so those are two big ones, but that's three quarters of a million dollars right there. But.
Going into 16, we were brand new in the insurance, the insurance switch over to being handled differently. We were taking a stab at what it was going to cost, and we did really well as far as where that was going to be. So there's some supplemental funds sitting there that we weren't sure we were going to need past 40 second times.
Right.
So going into 17, we've had a better grasp.
But being that I'm a bottom-line kind of guy, I really, really like that we ended up spending $4 million less than we brought in as a county. Now, for me, we've got to watch that general fund close. We clearly want that thing to be about 25%. We definitely don't want it to be much under 25%, but I start to get queasy when it's much over 25% as well. There is no reason.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's no, we're not a holding agency. We're not supposed to be holding dollars that we don't need. And so I believe, Lisa, that we need to ask you, as we move into the FY18 budgeting process, we need to keep a really close eye on where that, where that is.
That's why when I, we start the process, I always make it very clear to the departments, elected officials, they really need to tell me where they think their, how much of their budget they think they're going to spend, so that we have a better idea going into the next budget process with, okay, you know, we thought we were going to do this, now we're going to do this, and this is what, how it's going to affect.
And overall, they're getting better, but it's a slow process. It's a mindset again, as Marty had said earlier, you know, from some of the practice that we've united in the past, where they have a little bit more flexibility, you know.
I would just say, I marvel at the fact that they knew at this, is the fact that having kind of mutually paid attention to what the county was doing in just a few years back, and Wayne, you're probably more capable of speaking to this than I can speculate, but it's just like, it is a pleasure to sit and be part of the organization, to study there, looking at you have, you know, balances going forward, they're on the positive side, not looking at what you have to walk back or do without going forward. I mean, it wasn't too long ago that you just had to budget. I don't know how it was done previously, but it has been a pleasure being a resident Story County, watching the things that we've added and how we've gone about paying for them.
Well, there's no question, when you have a balanced budget where revenues meet or exceed expenditures on the budget, which is the plan, and then in actuality, you only spend 90% of what you budgeted, the numbers are going to look pretty good. I mean, you know, it, just the way it's been working. I don't remember us ever being 90%. I remember us being more like 93%, 94%, but I don't remember us ever being down to 90%.
And you know, the big, the big ones, the junior loans, look at how much they only spent, 80% of their budget because there's so much, the.
Well, you can't do more.
Yeah, you can't do more than you have the right of way for, you have the timeline for. They're going to probably go into the first quarter here of 17, spending, you know, substantial amount of dollars if they hear you go over.
Yep. All right, good.
I also did update all of your individual budget history books last week, so that you have the actual year-end information at your fingertips. Whether you refer to them, I don't know. I can just pick up the phone and say, hey, Lisa, what did?
Well, you know I love my.
We just love talking to you, Lisa, you know, it just keeps you on your toes.
This year, for FY16 ending year, the operating was 55% and wages and benefits were 45% of our average budget, which is already probably not, probably already.
I do keep track of that stuff.
Aye.
Amazingly. Any other questions? All right, FY16 inventory report. We all had the pleasure of going around and taking a look at our cash count. Tell us about the.
You guys got two cash counts? All right, I've got to do inventory now. All items over 500 are interpersisted throughout the year. Just kept track by, I'll give Shelley a blank here, she does a really amazing job of making sure that she's Johnny-on-the-spot, making people do inventory cards. And we have departments that would rather we did more than 500 and we don't. We've got the discussion, and we're standing by the 500. Each March or April, we send out a list to the departments of their inventory, their individual inventory. A lot of times, they get signed and sent back. I don't think they get reviewed. I don't think they get, overall, I think they don't. I know that my boss goes around and checks every item off the list, but she also helps the smaller inventory companies do a lot of this too.
Well, what was really encouraging though is when we were going around during the cash count, we saw representatives of your office coming into the.
Doing inventory.
Doing inventory, and I says, oh, so that's what they do. And you know, I really think they appreciated it too.
Yeah, I think that some think it's honorous and some think it's valuable and some think it's just. and some think it's just, um, anyway, we do, I randomly select items to go out and look at. I, I pick, depending on how many items each department has, I pick a number of items based on their total count. Um, this year, um, we did 134 items and six were not verified. So that's 4.3%.
I think you did 140 items, didn't you?
And, uh, since you're...
140?
Yeah, 134 were verified and six were not verified. So, I'm...
I'm sorry, yes, you're right. So the reasons for not by verification were, you know, items transferred and deleted without a transfer card. That happens?
Every year. Yep, every year.
Every year. Uh, and that's what I mean when I say we'll take everybody goes through their lists, item by item by item, to make sure they can locate everything. I wish they would, but they don't. I can wish a lot of them.
Feels like it's pretty consistent in that 5% range.
It is pretty consistent, about 5% is not verified, yeah. Um, yeah, this information is shared with the state auditors when they arrive. They do a, part of their, the overall audit for the county is for them to go through and make sure that we've done this, A, and B, what the findings were.
They've never been concerned with the files.
Never, never have been concerned. Um, anything over $5,000 is put on the capital S, that's appreciated. And that list is also included in the town office. FY18 auditors just notified me this morning that they will start their audit on this evening. So two weeks will...
Stay away from Marla.
Right. Yeah. Of course, they plan for when I want to be on vacation, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the update.
Uh, public forum number two, opportunity for members of public to comment on items not on today's agenda, would not take any action on that due to privacy of me, but we might do so in the future. Anybody wishing to address us? Seeing no one moving to the microphone. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates. Wayne?
Originally met with Carla yesterday and we just had a couple of items to talk about. You'll probably hear a little bit more about it a little later. We did have a, a change in jail diversion program area. You know, we have designated an employee that transferred from community service over to take that role. After being there and seeing the layout and such, they decided that it wasn't a good fit for him and so now they're going through the process again of screening. I think there were quite a number of applicants, some even out, outstate. And I understand that they will be finalizing the application pool and then having interviews to try to find someone. One of the things they're going to try to do this time is to make sure when someone comes in that they get a tour of the jail and actually can see the environment that they're going to be working in and so forth. And so unless people have had a background in mental health as well as other law enforcement, other kinds of thing, it might be a, a different situation. But Carla was very confident that, that they, that they would be able to successfully find someone in that program. And then the other area that she talked about was the need for us to just appoint an alternate to represent Story County on the Regional Governance Board. So when I'm not available and so forth, that person will be authorized to vote in that regard.
Well, let's get down on next week's agenda then, Shelley. We need to have Marty, you willing, serve it all, not all day.
I spoke, I was one of the things I was going to speak to, is that when I had this conversation, I was one of those duties to step up to.
No action today, let's get it on next week's agenda.
Okay.
Deb? Anything from your party?
Had the opportunity to get read in a little bit from Renee in Mount Stairs and Matt Mount Stairs in regards to the Cresview, in the setting towards the Board of Health in regards to how that is evolving and it's a colorful saga.
You know, I miss too for lots and lots of reasons, but I really miss him on the board to help. That was...
Trusting his hands over.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I know every time I walk by your office, you're, you're meeting with somebody or phoning up one of those screwy reminders, so I'm sure that you are getting acclimated.
I would tell the public, he was a man that kept a lot of handwritten records and I've had the opportunity to come across his musings. And if anybody was going to stop by and see me, I would probably tell you the funniest one though. And I think it was through a drainage district meeting that Paul wrote down and he said that knowledge is, knowledge is knowing that tomato is a fruit. Wisdom is knowing that you don't put that into a fruit salad. He reminded me, just a little paragraph, but it's been insight and he, he hit a, a humbling experience to understand the depth and complexity of this job, but you guys make it look too easy.
He, he was one of a kind. He was a good one. Uh, let's see, I had a great meeting with Council, Ames City Councilman Tim Garten, Deb Shulgroth, John Oshmason in the jail, and Connie Torzdal. And I met with Tim. Tim was very interested in what kind of programming we have for inmates during, during the time that they visit us in the, in the county jail. And I thought it was a really productive meeting. Nothing's come of it other than hopefully the beginning of a conversation of the way Ames, my Ames and this county might partner to, to offer additional programming both while inmates are with us and, and immediately upon their return to, to the county. Because frankly, we'd love to never, ever, ever have them as guests again. So we'll see where that goes. I'll keep you guys updated if anything progressed from that, but it was a nice conversation. Announcements, Wayne?
Uh, I have two announcements. One, this evening, of course, Ames and PO will have a meeting. That should last very long, City Council Chambers, 6 o'clock. This afternoon, I'll be heading down to ISAC for the seat advisory board. And I was just on the phone before this meeting with Carla Becker at the Secretary of State's Office, and one of the agenda items is going to be talking about the makeup of the board and its representation. Currently, the board is made up with three people from the Secretary of State's Office, three people from ISACA, which is the auditors from around the state and that affiliate, and one person appointed by the Iowa State Association of County Board of Directors, and I'm the appointee from the Iowa State Board of Directors. And so one of the things that they're going to talk about is the makeup of the board, whether or not it should be changed or looked at a little bit different. The Secretary of State seems to think that counties are the whole of a slight majority. And if you count my appointment, there's four county representatives and only three from the Secretary of State's Office. And so one of the things that they want to talk about is the role of the 208E. And so I, I, my concern was, is that it's customary for counties that if we have a 208E, that a supervisor serve on that board because they are part of the funding mechanism. So she just wanted me to have a little heads up and it would be kind of an interesting discussion this afternoon. So I, I don't know what the future is going to hold, whether ISAC might even not be a part of the 208E agreement as well. And then the question is, since the Secretary of State, the legislature appropriates funds, do you want a legislator sitting on this board? And so should be an interesting discussion and I doubt if we will get any final action. I think probably my recommendation would be that they take it back to the three entities, which is the ISACA group, the ISAC Board of Directors, and the Secretary of State for further discussion and then finally vote on the makeup of the membership at a later date. So should be interesting.
Thank you. Announcements, Marty?
Look forward to hearing what you come back with that. Two things. Uh, we had the initial rec center meeting here in Nevada, which is, I was a county representative that the Story County Hospital and the city of Nevada are looking to move toward implementation of the, what it would take to have a rec center be brought into this community. Quite possibly, they were looking at two sightings, one's in the Score Park facility here in Nevada, not at the campus of the county hospital. Look forward to seeing where they're going there and be working within the community and seeing what the possibilities are and looking to have outreach on partnerships because they believe that it would be a facility that will serve on a regional basis. So they're looking to do some identifications and nominations of people that can speak to it. Secondly, just hearing from Sue McCaskill, that was a great thing, that C K stepped up and put $2,000 towards the animal shelter, which when you hear the department head tell you you're at 100% of capacity, you know you have somebody doing all that they can and they're probably, she probably went back to Morgan once she left. So I thank C K for being a good court steward in the community. That's, you can't get enough of that.
Thanks. Nothing from me.
We'll have Deb on a group adjournment.
My second. All the affairs, aye?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.